Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Today is January the 21st, 2021. Welcome to 2021. We'll get right into the unfinished business. First up, we have a presentation of review of Dawson County Employee Handbook's Paid Time Off Policy, Section 14-3. That was tabled from the July 2nd, 2020 Voting Session. Human Resources Director Brad Gould. Brad?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I'm here to talk to you about money. So, supposed to smile when I say that.
Do you have, do you have a lot of money?
No, I don't. That's why I'm here to talk about it. Roger that. Anyway, last year, we approved the handbook on or about the 25th of January. And in that, we had a provision to buy back up to 40 hours of PTO per year. It was taken, that particular line was taken out of the handbook, and I was asked to address it in July. I did. And we were, and I was asked to again, address it back into the beginning of the year. So, here I am. So, basically, we have a policy, 14.3 Paid Time Off. And it goes into the definition of paid time off and what we use it for. And the line we took out stated, employees may receive a one-time payout of up to 40 PTO hours, PTO hours each calendar year for any unused PTO. And that line is what we're looking at tonight. Did run some numbers of what that might cost the county. I can answer to that if you'd like. I'm open for any questions.
I would like.
You know, the numbers.
So, it took an average number of employees, took 40 hours, took an average pay rate, and it would cost, and this is going to be a very, probably a high number, if you will, because we really don't know who's going to take advantage of this. Some of those, some of our employees have two hour, 200 hours that they could use, or sell a portion of that back, and some have 11 hours. And maybe that's all they're going to sell back. Then we have the other group of employees who may not sell anything back. So, it could potentially cost the county approximately $290,332, $290,332. That's kind of looking at the high end of things.
That's, that's if everybody maxed out 40 hours. Is that your high watermark?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Now, the money, I guess if, if everybody accrues all the hours during the year that they can accrue, the money, the money is already a budget to pay for that time off, right?
No.
Not?
No. That's be above and beyond.
Correct. So, the time they accrue is not in the budget?
Ms. Vicki? If they actually take it off, it's in the budget, but this would be above and beyond that.
Their salaries are budgeted for an annual salary. So, if you take two weeks off during the year, that's, that's already included in the budget.
Right.
But if you're going to get paid an extra week, then that's not included. And that's why we would need to do a budget amendment to be able to add this to the budget.
But it's, but it's paid for hours they've already accrued.
Correct.
Correct. It just is not.
And they not use it.
Yeah.
This is above and beyond actually being out for sick or vacation. They have it banked, in other words, they have that many hours banked, but that's not in the budget. Basically, we budget salary based on
An annual salary.
An annual salary, 2080 hours for most employees, and then Fire Department and Sheriff's Office have different salary, different hourly numbers that we budget.
Well, we don't carry that over as a long-term liability on our books.
It has carried us a liability. Yes. But you don't budget for liabilities like that? That's a balance sheet item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because if everybody used all their time they've accrued during the year, we pay them for it.
Yeah. I mean, if they use it, then you do pay them for it.
But they're out of work, so it balances itself out. It's not like getting two checks.
Yeah.
So, if you have two weeks of PTO, 80 hours, and you take 40, you only have 40 hours left that you can use any other time during the year. If you, based on this statement, if you offer to sell back, if you will, five of those 80 hours, that's the one time you used it. So, that's all you get for the year is that five hours, based on the way it's written. It's a one-time use of up to 40 hours.
We don't separate, we don't segment out a separate bucket for this to come out of. It comes out of each individual department's budget.
Correct.
I mean, it would get charged back essentially, or whatever terminology you want to use. It gets charged to their overall budget.
Salaries do.
Right.
But as Vicki said, we would, if we decided to do this and approve this, we would have to budget an additional $290,000 in, out of fund balance, in some form of a line item, if it was used. And then she would have to put that in each person, each department's salary budget as it was used up.
And I think the spirit of this was to have a program for our employees that they wouldn't be losing any time if for some reason they couldn't use it. When we introduced a new handbook, we did increase the PTO accrual rate, and you can carry over up to 480 hours a year. No one's up there yet. And the reason behind that is we banked a lot of time, those folks, I think, who had over five years and over so many hours we banked. So...
I have a question for you, Brad. I don't think we, and this is a concern that I have, that in this, we didn't put anything that says that you have to keep a minimum. I mean, we have a 480 that you can carry over. I understand that. But there's nothing in it that says they have to keep a minimum number of hours. So, in other words, the concern that I have would be that someone who only had 40 hours, sold those 40 hours, and then the week after that, they got sick for the next two weeks, and now they're not going to get a paycheck period. So, my concern would be that we don't have anything in there that says you have to keep at least a minimum of something, so that in case something happens to you, instead of being able to drain it all the way down to zero.
Would it not be the end of the year when the, when the trigger happens?
It would be, but what if they got sick first week of January? They still wouldn't have any time.
So, we don't give them the bucket at the beginning. They earn it throughout the year.
No, they earn it throughout the year.
So, so, so if I, if I start January 1st of this year with, I like to use round numbers, 80 hours.
You said you start January with 80 hours.
And that's with the rollover.
If that's what you have.
I have 80 hours. We pass this. And I, I'm going to go on vacation, and I want to sell back 40 hours. I can do that. And that's it for the year, except for anything else I would accrue. But I can't sell anything back. If I get sick, in the chairman's example, and I'm out for two weeks, well, after that 40 hours, assuming I didn't accrue anything, get sick on vacation or something, then I have to use other avenues, FMLA, PTO, donation program that we have, that sort of thing. So, I think it's up to the employees to monitor their own PTO, their own time off, you know, and obviously, well, HR will always help them as well. And I don't know if we can legally, this would be a question that a researcher asks, or attorney, I don't know if we can require people to have a minimum. I did work for a company one year, at one time where they shut down the shipyard for a week over the Christmas holidays. And it was known that you needed to save at least a week of your vacation for that shutdown. And if you didn't, then you didn't, you worked that week without pay.
Well, it's kind of a gamble to take the payoff, because we don't know what the future's going to hold.
Sure.
So...
But you can, you can carry over the, we did strength, I think it's important to note that, that we, strengthened is not the right word, but, but we added some benefits the last time we did this. This is not the only broader thing that we've allowed when we redid the handbook. I mean, we did the 480-hour carryover. What was it before that?
I don't remember.
We didn't have some of these additional benefits that we did add in additional benefits prior. So...
Based on your, your score on your annual review, you could get some extra time there as well.
Just, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a few comments based upon some of the comments and questions. First of all, just I want to point out that the policy as it's written does not provide for a year-end limitation to the payout. And so, I think that's how people maybe have perceived that it would occur, but it, but as I think your example suggested, they could ask for that payout on January 2nd, or anytime. So, that would be one thing, is if we wanted to control it to a designated time. Now, because we have this rolling accrual of PTO, the time really does not matter that much, but at least it would give accounting some expectation of when these buyouts might happen, which may be worse for Vicki and her staff if they're all coming at the same time. But that's something we just need to be aware of and make sure that that's worded as you intend it. The other thing in terms of Brad's question about could we require a minimum to be maintained, I think we could, because this payout is an option we don't have to give them. You know, they accrue the time and they have it to use it, but if we give this right to, to be bought out, we could require that there be some minimum cushion. You also could consider that the buyout is only available for hours that would otherwise be carried forward up to the 40. And that doesn't totally solve your problems of potentially, you know, completely depleting your PTO bank. But for these employees who many times are carrying over, you know, like 480 hours is extreme, and you said no one had gotten to that point, but I suspect we have a lot of employees who are consistently carrying over a pretty substantial amount, and who aren't ever getting to use those until maybe retirement or separation. So, you could even consider whether that buyout is limited, you know, once you have certain amount of, you know, if you hit a bank of 100 hours, then you're permitted to buy out 40. Or, you know, if you hit that carryover amount, you can be bought out a certain amount. So, because I think one concern here is that there's employees who are dedicated and, and work and have either, you know, never take their time, and then they never, ever really get the benefit of it. So, you know, considering lots of options as opposed to just an absolute buyout, we could also consider, you know, you hit a threshold, and then that's when you get to start selling back, which is another way of saying having a cushion.
We do have a group of employees that they get an hour of PTO, they're going to use it. I mean, it's just...
But on the majority, I mean, if they take off 40 hours during the year, take off a week vacation, we're paying them for that 40 hours. They're getting a check. If they don't take it off and want to cash it in, in some departments, when somebody takes off, we got to pay overtime, or we got to rank somebody in, especially public safety. I mean, we're paying, if you don't take off and cash it in, you're still working. We're paying for 40 hours. If you do take off, we're still paying 40 hours. You got to pay somebody else. So, sometimes there's a wash in some departments. Now, some, you know, some departments don't have to pay anybody to come in if you take a week off or two weeks. But some of them, they've accrued that time, and they don't take off, I bet they should be able to cash it in. Because you're not having to hire, you're not having to shut down, you're not having to hire somebody part-time. So, I mean, that's, I, I think I agree with the chairman on the, leaving a minimum in there, though, because we've had people in the county go on time without, or leave without pay. If they didn't have a disability policy, we did have to open up the pocketbooks and help them along. So, I think that's a good idea.
And what do you think the minimum should be?
A week or something, 40 hours, I'd barely say.
So, you're saying that, you're saying the, they'd have to have a minimum of 40 hours built up before they could take above 40 hours. That there would always have to be a cushion of 40 hours. So, you'd have to have a minimum to, to...
Basically, if they wanted the full buyback of 40, they'd have to have 80.
Well, if you hit the, the trigger, right, for a full buyback, but if you hit, if your trigger was set at you had a carryover of 40 hours, anything above that, you could buy back.
Up to, well, one time, up to maximum 40 hours.
Once a year.
Once a year.
Yeah, because that would be...
Because you do have some, like Brad said, you do have some that they build off, build up an hour, they'll take an hour.
But that would be in accounting, I mean, just keeping up with that would be a nightmare. So, I think the one time a year is a good...
Exactly. I agree with you. Yes, sir.
Now, the way that is now, or is presented, the one time a year would be, they could decide when they did it, right? Not at the end of the year, the way that it's structured, as presented. And I think that would be better if they could decide when they took it off, if you're going to do the 40-hour minimum anyway. So, that way, they could, if they wanted to wait to the end of the year and take another full 40, they could. Or if they needed, you know, to take 20 and cash that in.
Rent their vacation.
Right.
Somebody has 120 hours, they take 40 for vacation, they take 40, they buy back 40 to pay for the vacation, and they have 40 left over. I mean, you can slice that anyway. Pay bills, fall on hard times, and have to meet some kind of financial obligation.
That's why I would like to have it to where they could choose when they done it within the year, because, you know, you don't ever know when you might need it. So, if they've not already exercised it, then they could choose when to do that.
Does anybody know what other counties do? Do you know what other counties do?
I haven't heard anything about a minimum. I have heard that some of them do have a buyback program, such as we presented here. I don't know if you've dealt with anything, Ms. Davis, but...
I think you see a huge variety of options. And so, and it is all finance-driven. You know, and expectations on staffing, as, as Commissioner Satterfield mentioned, that's not insignificant either, you know?
Well, I go back and reiterate the fact that this board has continuously, over the last many years, continued to invest heavily, whether it be salary raises, insurance, the last update we did to the handbook, you know, sometimes $290,000 seems, in grand scheme of things, can be, seem small, but it's a big number, and it's a big investment. We continue to have invested in our employees. And over the years, it's not like we've never done anything. So, you know, there's, we have a very good benefit package.
Vicki, what percent of our budget is for employees? 66, 67%? Okay.
So, if I understand this correctly, correctly, please, I mean, if somebody has 80 hours, and they take vacation, still 80 hours we pay out. If they take 40 hours and then buy back 40 hours, it's still 80 hours we pay.
If we had the buyback program, yeah. And I will say, just for the history, for some of you that are not as old as me, the county used to have a buyback program, and they did away with it, if I remember back then, based on the fact that people did start to not take any vacations and try to save all that money so they could buy some of it back. And the thought process was, at that particular time, is that you did want your employees to actually take a real vacation and rest a little bit, and not be, you completely give out, because they never took one. So, so we have done it in the past. So, we do have a history of it. But it was, at that particular time, I think, an end of the year, one time, 40-hour buyback at that particular time. But got any other questions for Brad? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll move into new business. Next up, we have a presentation of request to accept the 2021 Criminal Justice Coordinating Council K-9 Grant, Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Greg Rowan. Greg, I don't see Greg, you going to do that? Come on.
Apologize, Major Rowan couldn't be here tonight. So, he had asked me to present this.
You got it.
Oh, yeah, I think I got it. If not, oh, no. All right. So, what I'm presenting is, is the 2021 K-9 Grant. It's $112,000, just over, like 112, some change, is to pay for two employees' salary, any other expenses, or anything like that that may come, is come, comes out of the county's budget. It's already a budgeted item. So, I'm just presenting that grant for signature approval.
Questions?
This is a continuation, correct?
Um, I'm not sure if it's just a continuing thing, or if it's a new one that we've already been awarded. But my understanding is the award's there.
The information says it's received this grant for several years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an ongoing grant.
That's what the information says.
Right. Yeah, we've had the grant for a long time. I'm just not sure if it falls under a continuation, or one we have to constantly reapply for, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably 15 years or better.
Yeah, it's, it's been a long time. I think Major Rowan says like 20 years. So, we've had it for a while.
Sheriff, didn't it start with the North Georgia K-9 Task Force back 18 years ago or so? Yeah, it's been going a long, long. How many we got now? Five?
Uh, the grant pays for two, but we have, we have two, three, four, 14, I think, five. So...
Dual-purpose following the bomb dog?
Yep, we have, we have one bomb dog that also does person searches. And then we have three dual-purpose dogs.
Good.
If I understand this, we need to move this forward to be voted on tonight?
Y'all just got a new, I think we approved a new building for that program, too, didn't we, for the K-9 program?
We did.
Their office building.
Office building, yeah.
Y'all good with moving it forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next up, we have a presentation of Center for Tech and Civic Life COVID Response Grant Funding Approval Request, Chief Registrar, Board of Elections and Registration Chair, Glenda Ferguson. Glenda?
That's a mouthful.
I hope you don't expect me to repeat it.
Three times.
C-T-C-L. That's, you know, the acronym for that. Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. Basically, this was something that came across my desk as an invitation in the midst of all the elections at the, towards the end. So, it was something where the deadline was right around the corner. So, I contacted Chairman Thurman and Ms. Vicki about it, and we went ahead and applied for the grant. So, I'm here to just ask for approval to receive it. We got approval for the 21,000 and some change for the runoff election, help offset the runoff election. It is a private grant source. So, maybe they'll in the future open up for others, but right now, it was just, I just received the runoff. Some counties were able to apply in November. I did not get that invitation, didn't know about it till after the fact. So, at least we have this much. So, I just wanted to, I think the information's in front of you. So, if you have any questions or...
The grant's $21,912.13.
With no match?
No match.
No match.
Free money.
Free money.
And this just goes back into budget to offset some of the costs?
Yes.
Some of it is. There are some things on here that we will purchase by January 31st. We have to, like the rolling carts that we don't have, that we need extra of. But as far as personnel costs and PPE equipment and that sort of thing will just offset some of the costs that we have obviously gone overboard with. So, yes.
Other questions for Glenda?
Do we need to move this?
This has to be moved forward as well, because it's deadline of January 31st.
Yes, and we still have to receive the monies and do all that we need to do. And I need to get with Lori on that as well. So...
Good with that?
Yes.
Curious, does that, because we're closed, a lot of those expenditures were in 2020, I would assume. So, when we do our books, since we're not receiving it until '21, does it have a look back? Were able to balance her account as revenue coming in, even though it was past the, okay, fiscal date, I guess?
Yeah, because it does, it does count for the January 5th runoff. So, anything like the payroll and stuff is for the January 5th runoff and not the November election.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions for Glenda?
I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
I'm going to brag on you, you and your staff, because I'm telling you, when you went to vote, it was like a well-oiled machine.
Great. Thank you.
And somebody was planning that. Somebody did a great job. I'm looking at one of somebody's. I know. But just thank you so much for that. I appreciate, I don't know how you stood up. I don't know why you aren't carried in on a stretcher from what you've been through.
By the grace of God, that's the only thing I can tell you.
But y'all did a great job, and I thank you for it.
Great staff, great board, couldn't ask for better. And great support all the way around when people carried me, when I couldn't hardly carry myself. They picked up and came in and helped us. So, it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda.
So, we're good to move with this.
Yes, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not going to turn this down.
All right. We'll move on to a presentation of request to accept Georgia Child Pastor Safety Mini Grant, Emergency Service Director Danny Thompson. Danny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is a continuation of a grant that we've had for several years now. We received notification from the Georgia Safe Kids and Georgia Department of Public Health that we had received the award. This basically, it's not a really a money exchange. It's basically, every month, you get six convertibles and four highbacks. If we use them, we send in a replacement. They send us... If we use them, we send in a replacement. They send us what we use that month. I'll tell you, you know, during the twenty-twenty and because of COVID and everything, we did see a pretty significant decrease in the amount of car seats that we both installed and sent out to the community. But hopefully in the near future with the vaccinations and everything, we'll be able to put this in the rearview mirror and deliver more of these to the community.
Do you get to keep them?
They do.
So you've got them stored somewhere.
They meet, correct, we store them at Fire Headquarters.
Oh, okay.
Because that's where we do it. And we do it by appointment only. It just, it helps to facilitate it. And that way the Fire Marshal staff who does the car seats, they're not out in the field. We don't miss somebody coming in for it. So it's just a little easier flow.
So they, they don't go to waste?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
Questions for Chief Tomps? Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Does this have to be moved?
No.
It doesn't?
Next up, we have presentation of IFV number three fifty-seven dash nineteen Rock Creek Park Birm Construction Change Order Funding Request. Public Works Director David McKee and Purchasing Manager Melissa Hawke. David, you gonna do that?
I think so.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I think we have a brief, yes, we do. We have a brief presentation. If you'll recall, a little bit of, yeah, here we go, little, little bit of background, a little bit of history, and I won't read this word for word. We're looking at, at putting in synthetic turf at Rock Creek Park. As, as part of the, we met, gosh, it's been eons ago, with a contractor, well, one of their concerns, as, as was our concern, was the amount of water. If anybody's familiar with Rock Creek Park, it's built a flood plain. So the, the amount of water that's there and, and water on those turf fields is not good. We had some heavy rain events and, and the furthest field, I guess, to the right, if you're looking at the soccer fields, continuously gets flooded out. There is a creek that runs the property line of Rock Creek there. And, and that, that creek in high water times, high rain events, just, just runs over the banks, washes out into the fields. So we looked at a number of different options. We looked at walls. We looked at all kinds of things to try to get this resolved. We did do some survey work and got an engineering firm and got some plans. We went to EPD and were successfully secured a buffer encroachment. The, the, in order to fix it without doing away with the field that's there, we had to get in the buffer. So EPD granted us a buffer. Townley Construction was awarded that bid offer. Originally, we received six offers at that time. Townley Construction was awarded that fifty-six thousand dollars. That was about a couple hundred, three hundred foot birm. He has started construction and we had several big rain events, if you'll recall, in, in last year. And we, we learned very quickly in the first big rain event that the birm we were about to install was not going to fix the problem. So we, we went back to the drawing board. We put a pause on the construction. We went back to the drawing board, did some more survey work. And, and we have developed a plan that, that we believe will solve the problem and, and also last much longer into the future. The, so that's a little bit of history, how we got to where we are and, and the reason for this. This talks a little bit about our EPD variance. A lot of that initial cost was landscaping. The, anytime we get in the buffer and we're taking that debris or the, the, the trees and the vegetation out, it's a lot of that pricing and, and the cost was because of the, the buffer requirements for EPD. That's an aerial photograph, just kind of where we're, where we're looking. The top right-hand corner is where the pavilion is, and you can see the parking lot, the, the gray line that, that sort of transects the middle of it is the walking trail. Here's your original plan. And you can see it's, it's right up, literally goes right up to the edge of the, the stream bank. The, the explanation, reason for the change order, I think we just covered most of that. But if, if we fix the problem and the goal still is to do turf fields and salvage the field that's there, we have to stop the water. We have to stop that creek from flooding out. So the, the solution for this is to extend that birm out on both sides. When, and in extending it, we're actually going to extend it out of the buffer. So we don't have to go back to EPD. We don't have to get additional buffer and variance. So once we get out of that buffer, it is just literally a birm and grass. The, the walking trail. Here's the new plan, and, and I don't expect everybody to see this, but it's, it's almost, it's going to be essentially twice as long as what was originally proposed. The walking trail that, that came down through the middle of there is actually going to rise up and it'll walk along the top of the birm. And then as you come back down, it will, it will tie back in. So we're not losing any walking trail. The walking trail's not going to be diverted over. So my request is that we approve the change order of seventy thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars for this project. You, you, just like all of us, asked the question, do we rebid this? I think had Mr. Townley have not started construction and had been under construction, possibly that would have been the answer. But my recommendation is, is that we move forward with this. And it can be funded out of our Splo six dollars. Parking wreck does have allocations left for that. So we have the allocation for Splo six to cover this expense. And I request that we approve that change order.
Is that the seventy thousand plus the fifty-six?
Yes, sir. The total contracted price will be the, yes, seventy-six, what is that?
Seventy thousand, five eighty-six.
Plus the fifty-six.
About a hundred and thirty.
Yeah, roughly one thirty.
Does that birm go, does it go all the way up to the, almost to the splash pad?
You're on the other side of the park. So if you.
Because I know that walkway.
Yeah, if you go the other side of the park.
Gets bloody sometimes.
If you go the other side of the park where the other pavilion is.
Right.
And you know, there's a bridge that goes to the Humane Society. It's going to go roughly from that bridge all the way down around the corner. There's, there's two light poles down there that, that are passed. There's really no landmarks, but it'll actually go down, turn the corner. And if it does flood out, it's going to flood out past the field. It may still flood the walking trail and still flood that. Right. And, and the, the key takeaway is, is we're in a flood plain. So we're trying to push water.
Divert.
Somewhere that it's, it's tough. So.
I know that's a little low that, that walk.
Yeah, the area you're talking about is low as well, yes. But this, this, this does nothing there.
I know it floods sometimes, maybe it's.
And then, and we still, we've already allocated money for the turf fields, I believe, in Splo six.
We.
Or did that get pushed to seven?
We, we did. They, they still have some remaining that's there. And then we have talked about the additional collections because we had to, I don't want to use the term rob some, but we had to utilize some for some of the project at Veterans Park. So we do, we, we are proposing some of the extra collections allocations to go towards those turf fields.
We got to get this figured out.
Yes, you will not see us talking about turf fields before we get this solved. And then the reality is, we want to see some rain events occur before we have some level of comfort to pull the trigger on, on that.
So this change order is for, the work that's already been done is not going to have to be redone. It's already, it's good to go. So it's just an additional.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. And it's, we got an original price from him some number of months back. He did go up a couple thousand dollars, and that was asphalt and landscaping is the, is the reason for that. A little bit increased from the, I think it should said sixty-six in your packet. But he did contact us and ask for, to revise that change order. But, but yes, that, that does not, nothing he's done has to be redone, with the exception of a little bit of silt fence and stuff like that. But, but no, no, it doesn't, doesn't change the original design that he had started. No.
Other questions for David?
Does this need to be moved?
No.
No, sir. Not, not tonight.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on. Presentation of Harry Sosby Road Right-Away and Development Agreement Acceptance. David, you gonna do that as well?
I will. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, Harry Sosby Road, if you'll recall, back in June, I believe it was June the twentieth, Harry Sosby, th- this board approved a revision to a master plan zone down off Harry Sosby Road and Lumpkin Campground. One of the stipulations that the developer agreed to is realignment of, realignment and construction of Harry Sosby Road. And then the design for that roundabout. You'll also recall, I don't have the date right in front of me, but, but this board approved the roundabout construction. We have a contractor that is, is under construction for the roundabout. What we're, what we're here before you today is acceptance of Harry Sosby Road. The, the actual new road construction is, is very close to completed. And, and the developer has, has met all of the requirements. You have a couple documents before you, number one being a development agreement. I want to say thank you to Ms. Angie and her staff, Sarah, and her, her office. She and I have spoken multiple times a day for the last week and a half trying to get these, these items hammered out. And also with the developer, they've been very good to work for. And, and I also want to make sure the board understands that the developer one hundred percent paid for, designed, and built this road, with the exception of my time and Brian's time in inspecting this and, and going out there. It's been one hundred percent developer-funded, designed and constructed. So there's a development agreement, and basically that development agreement spells out what is the requirements, what the developer's going to do. The, the joy here is, is ninety-nine percent of it's done. And it's, it's more of a formality of getting the development agreement as well. The other item in the development agreement is a warranty. We want, I wanted to make sure that we could secure a warranty, just as this was any other contractor. So we will have a maintenance bond, a one-year maintenance bond, which we required. Same, same essential warranty that we're going to get up from our roundabout contractor. And then there are several exhibits in there. They reference the two tracks, the two developments that they're developing. I think it's Pod A, and then we'll call it Pod B for discussion purposes, that the developers are developing residential subdivisions. And then you'll see a right-of-way deed and then the meets and bounds of that right-of-way. So originally, there was part of this process, the, when they, when they tie the new Harry Sosby alignment into the old Harry Sosby alignment, they had to, we had to clamp the, the road closed so some stormwater pipes could be installed. So the road remains closed today with all the rain and water and everything. We were hopeful that, that I would be able to tell you today that the road's ready to open, but it's not. So I originally said that we would request that we would approve these documents today. However, it's not necessary that we move that forward tonight. We can wait till the next voting session. And between now and then, we will have the signatures on this development agreement from the developer. The developers, plural, you'll see that there's multiple on there because there's two different players, Piedmont Residential and then Four Star are the two different developers. So we'll have those signatures there. And then I'll also be able to tell you that the road is completed, hopefully at that time. And then when we're opening it, we're opening the road that is one hundred percent complete, final striping, final topping, everything's done. So I'll attempt to answer any questions. I think I covered everything.
Questions for David?
The developers haven't seen this agreement.
They have.
They have seen.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And in twelve months, do you do the inspection?
Yeah, yes.
Or a third party or?
Yes. And it's, let me also say, it's, it's for manufactured defects. If a gas truck turns over and the road, you know, burns up, that's the develop. I'm not going to go back to the developer and ask for that. That's just like any other county road. It will be either an insurance thing or the county's responsibility. So it is, and, and our maintenance bond spells out workman defects, just like our development regulations or subdivision regulations state for any of our, our roads.
Other questions for David? Thanks, sir. We'll move on to presentation of Green Infrastructure and Low-Impact Development Program. David, you're doing that as well?
I am. And Brian's here. If I need help, Brian's going to bail me out. And I get to sit down for a minute. So Green Infrastructure, Low-Impact Development. If you'll recall, a little background, several years ago, actually two thousand and fourteen, following the decennial census, the small area around the Georgia Foreign and Corridor, EPD required us to have a MS four permit, municipal separate stormwater permit. That's a, a permit that, that EPD issues. We have to have an annual report every year, and it is based off of population. And basically what that EPD permit does is it requires us to have ordinances in place, programs in place over time, requires us to inspect outfall structures and, and require certain water quality features within the MS four permit. A little side note about this MS four area, I fully expect that area to grow with the new census. There's a map in here a minute of the, of the area and the soils in the area. So this program that we're talking about is only going to be enforced, only enforceable within the MS four area. So if somebody develops commercial property, not residential subdivision, so commercial property, and we'll talk about that briefly in a second, it will be, they'll, they'll have the option to, and encourage to do this. This is not an ordinance. It is just simply a program through our MS four document that, that EPD has approved. Little bit, there's a vision. So we were required by EPD to have this program. I'm just going to say it. Some things we deal with, with EPD are a little bit backwards. We're required to have everything approved by EPD before we come get approval from this board. So we've done that. We received approval last year from EPD for this program. And now we are bringing it before the board. Definition of what the green infrastructure and low-impact development. Basically, it's a broad range of stormwater practices to lower the impact that, that these commercial projects have on the environment. The better site planning techniques, protection of the conservation areas, site design techniques, the structures, so the bio-retention areas, I'm sure you've probably heard that. It's a detention pond, but it looks like grass and rocks. So the, the water perks slower and, and filters a little slower. Vegetated strips, rain gardens. A lot of these practices we have seen and, and over the years and are utilized in several of our commercial areas already. We just didn't have a low-impact green infrastructure program available. Again, we talked a little bit about the purpose. Right here, we talked about commercial development. This is not applicable in residential subdivision. So this is not something that a residential subdivision would do. It is, it is strictly for commercial. Evaluate the feasibility. So when somebody submits a set of commercial plans, they're going to have to do a feasibility analysis to see if it's feasible for the green infrastructure. If it is not, they have, there is very specific guidelines in this program as to what, what does and does not meet the requirements for this program. And there's a, we've, we've gotten some documentation from EPD that Brian will use when we're doing our plan reviews. And the, and the burden is on the developer, the burden's on the engineer to basically give us that feasibility and, and show us that, that it is or is not feasible. Soils may be one. If there's, if the soils just aren't such that it, it won't work, then, you know, we're not going to ask them to do that because then we're defeating the purpose of the whole program in the first place. So evaluate the feasibility. There, we're, we will, we will have to develop an inventory and continue to do that. Brian spent one day this week, all day doing inventory in our MS four area anyway. So we'll, we'll do that. And then part of that feasibility is identifying the, the most effective approach in integrating these items that are required. The ultimate intent is to establish the program, ensure these practice structures that, that are designed work. It, it, it's ultimately, and you heard me, you've heard me say the, the term program. This is not an ordinance. It is not a program. It's not something that they have to do. It's a program we have to have on the books that EPD is required as part of our MS four document. Here's some examples of the, the, the vegetated strip and the bio-retention. I said detention, bio-retention.
So I'm hearing you said there's no enforcement of it. It just, just as a suggestion.
Yes and no. The enforcement of it, number one, is going to start at the plan review. And then if, if, if their feasibility analysis comes back and says, yes, it's feasible, then the enforcement does fall on us to, to go out and make sure. then the enforcement does fall on us to to go out and make sure that they install. And then at the end of the project, they have to do as-built, and they have to have an agreement, just like our stormwater detention ponds do for our our stormwater ordinance. They have to have those documents in place so that if it's not done, or something's not maintained properly, we have the the documentation on hand of who we can go contact to to get it cleaned out. Because these items do require maintenance, just like any other stormwater pond or anything like that.
So just out of curiosity, when Walmart was built, the outside perimeter of Walmart has parking places that had a grid system that was put in there in grass. It was a permeable surface. Was that something that we required when that was done, or is that something that they just voluntarily did?
So, no, it was something that that Walmart voluntarily did. Walmart corporate does all kinds of things. They use special silt fences and stuff like that. So, no, it wasn't. And it also was never designed to hold trucks like it's utilized. That's why it's not grass. And still, it's, it's, you know, becomes a truck parking lot.
But that's, that wouldn't be, I mean, I see impermeable paver systems, but that's not part of the.
Yeah, I I don't think we would. I I think when they go through the feasibility analysis, that it's not, that's not a feasible place for the perme. I think where they're talking about the permeable pavers would be the walk, the the sidewalks going into the Walmart, perhaps. And I don't know if that's the best example, but, you know, the, perhaps at a Walmart, these these would be used in the outer perimeters and stuff rather than than in the middle. And and probably the landscape islands that where the light poles and stuff are could work as some of these feet.
But it becomes the responsibility of the property owner to maintain these.
And we have, we have maintenance agreements as part of this process that that we can hold a party accountable for those.
Yep. Permeable pavement does not include potholes in parking lots.
That is, that that is true. So I've I've talked a little bit about this, and I I don't know as we go into as as much detail, but the our commercial plan review process, we have an established process now that we do our commercial plan reviews. This is just another item that when when we're reviewing, Public Works is reviewing those documents. Brian will do his review based off the green infrastructure, low-impact development program. Here's to your comment, Commissioner Gaines, they're 100% total private, privately maintained areas. This is not anything that Dawson County would be accepting. However, we will inspect them and and annually, I believe. Where's Brian? Is that an annual?
Within five years.
Five years? Okay. So within every five years, we will have to do a site visit and inspect them, map them, document where they are, and go from there. So implementation, many different counties are implementing it different ways. Some, some folks implemented, started implementing it as soon as they got EPD approval. We have, I'm going to say we have sort of slowly rolled out implementing it. Nobody has said, well, has this been approved by your board yet and this and that? But it it's become common ground for developers in MS4 areas to do their feasibility analysis for the the low-impact development, green infrastructure program. So we will roll this out and implement this essentially as soon as we get approval from the board. And and what I'll present to you today is that we're currently doing this already.
So there's enough teeth in it to make it real, not just fluff. I mean, there's enough teeth in it to make the developers have to do it without us, say, putting that as a stipulation on anything, but they would have to abide by this process.
Yeah, that that would not be necessary. That's, that that would not be necessary at all. There is enough teeth, teeth in it, and the the feasibility analysis is the the most recent one we worked through, they, you know, the, they asked, do you have a feasibility analysis form? Do you have that form? Brian's reached out to EPD. We've got some examples of that form, and it's, it's, it spells out pretty clearly what is and is not feasible. And and there's, uh, you know, if the if developer comes back and says the soil's not feasible, we've got soil maps we can look at and verify that if it is or is not within within reason.
So when somebody, if if we do this, if somebody applies for a commercial permit, this will just be another line item that they have to submit as far as the feasibility study, or is that something that y'all will request?
Yes.
So it'll just be?
Short-term, what, in reality, Commissioner Dooley, what will happen is they're going to submit it, and then we'll have to ask them, can you provide the feasibility analysis? Over time, it will become commonplace, just like the the EPD checklist for the multi-phase. So in reality, short-term, we're going to have to ask for that. When they submit it, our first comment will be, provide the, if it's within the MS4 area.
Yeah.
If it's outside of that, then then we're there. So i- if it's somebody from out of town, that's probably going to be our number one comment. If they're local, they'll understand where the MS4 area is.
And it's just commercial.
Yes, ma'am.
Just commercial.
So if they come back with an engineer report saying Brian won't park?
Yeah, it's a little more to it than that, but essentially, yes, if they come back and say that it's not feasible for XYZ reasons for one or more of the practices, it may not exempt them from the whole program.
Right.
They're still responsible for their stormwater. I want to make sure everybody, I don't want to, they're they're still responsible for their stormwater, still responsible for their water quality, water quantity. They're still responsible for all that. This is just, uh, uh, different measures that they can use and a different program that they can use.
So it's just alternative from just having a retention pond and?
Correct.
You know?
Big hole in the ground with a structure.
Yeah.
Other questions for David? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of elected official salary, Human Resources Director Brad Gu. Brad?
Evening again, here to talk about money. The, I was asked to look at the salaries of our elected officials, specifically Chief Magistrate, magistrate, and Associate Magistrate, as well as a coroner. Every year, ACCG comes out with a guide as to what the salary should be. And just to give you some background, this year, they came out and they, they looked at the sheriff, tax commissioner.
Basically, all of your constitutional officers.
Constitutional officers, right.
Probably probate judge.
Yeah, all the constitutional officers, but the ones that are not classified as constitutional, they did not.
Correct. So what they did is they gave them, they changed their base pay and and reworked the calculation. They did not address those positions I just talked about. So, and there was no COLA given for those positions either for moving into 2021. And so I'm here to present that to you. And I've got the numbers, what it would like, look like for each position, for the, and I have an extra number in here. But for the chief magistrate, it'd be about $1,410.09. Magistrate would be $1,0175.08. Associate magistrate would be 403.7, and our coroner, 599.27.
The deputy coroners would be what?
Didn't, I didn't calculate the deputy coroners, their supplemental employees, they, I believe they get about $1,400 a month.
$1,200, I think.
Right, so.
I don't.
Are they not eligible for this?
Yes.
Yes.
And and the reason I asked Brad to bring this up is in the past, when we have given COLA raises to our employees and the state did not grant those same COLA raises to elected officials, we had done that. And so I brought that up, and that excludes us. I mean, our salary is set a different way. But in the, in the instance of being fair across the board, I had Brad to run these numbers and to bring that up, give the board an opportunity to do the same for the magistrate court and the coroner's office and his employees and the judges that are in the magistrate court, so that we keep everybody on the same level field. And as Brad has told you, it's not a whole lot of money. It is something that I thought that we should take a serious look at.
Does the state have the ability to retro, if they put it in, could they retro back to? If they decided to change, you know, if they look at their year-end numbers and decided to change?
State will not make any changes, at least for a year, no. They've made their decision for 2021, they will not do anything unless they do it in this year's General Assembly for next year. So, no, they won't do that.
So, yeah, basically. Everybody in the county got the COLA increase except for a few people, and that's mostly us. But there was legislation to include us with probate judges, everybody, all the other constitutional officers. This was addressed last year in legislation. For some reason, we got left out, and then it was discussed, and they were going to address it, and we coded it. Well, we're not touching anything salaries until this is passed, so there may be something that addresses this in the future, but right now, we're kind of left out.
Addressed during this legislative session, or? You don't know?
It's been discussed for a few years now.
Okay. Okay.
It was approved by the House last year, and then when he got sentenced, all of them.
Well, they got approved for everybody but your little group.
Yes. For some reason, we're not included with the constitutional officers, but then now we're not included with the county employees.
No man's land.
And you can't be off and end up there because that my study is only the summers magistrate, we just left out.
The only thing I, change I've ever seen is in procedural, after the the document came out, I've never seen an increase or change in any of the salaries. So I did a quick calculation for the the deputy coroners. So the total for the chief magistrate, magistrate, associate magistrate, coroner, and his deputies would be about $3,700.
For all. That's for everybody.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That basically would give them the 2% that everybody else already got. Of course, now the elected officials that they revamped got more than that, obviously, because they got 5% increase.
To the base.
To the base. Correct.
And you, when you look at it, it makes sense to to give the 2%. The employee cost index as of September was, I believe, 2.8%. They were projecting it to be over three by year end. I don't think those numbers are out yet. So we're keeping up with inflation, but not at a a good pace.
So the recommendation is to do 2%, not 5? Because I know there's one thing, I guess the state.
And that's just what we gave our other employees. And we've done that in the past when they weren't included.
And as the judge spoke of, they have alluded to to looking at the coroner again and revamping how they're paid, as well as the commissioners and the magistrate judges. We have, we don't have anything yet.
Are we talking about six people total?
Three, four, seven, eight, seven or eight?
Correct.
Four in his office and four in the coroner's office. Eight people total. Any other questions for Brad? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of intergovernmental agreement with the City of Dawsonville and the Dawson County Board of Elections and Registration relating to the 2021 municipal elections for the City of Dawsonville. County Attorney Angela Davis, Ms. Davis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And Ms. Ferguson, if you have anything you'd like to say, I'd welcome you to jump right in as well. This is an agreement that has typically been entered into between the county through its Board of Elections and the City of Dawsonville. Traditionally, an agreement is presented each odd number year for the Board of Elections to conduct city elections. It's been requested and presented to us again this year. It's very standard and similar to the agreements you passed in the, that you have approved in the past. We did add some additional language just to provide some more protections in terms of if there's additional expenses, you know, based upon what we've seen in the election arena this year. So if there's an election contest or challenge, then additional expenses are clearly provided for, and the city would incur those. But if it meets with your approval, then I do think we need to add this to the voting session agenda tonight, correct, Ms. Glenda? And have that approved. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to ask, answer them or invite Glenda to do that.
Questions for Ms. Davis? Questions for Ms. Davis?
Thank you. Then if we could move that to the voting session agenda, please, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Cloud, that would be wonderful.
I'll get with that. Okay.
The Board of Elections is calling a special meeting on Friday to approve this as well. And then there's an election coming up pretty soon in the city. Glenda, what is that date? Is it? Oh, not until November.
March 16.
That's what I'm talking about, okay, March. So we're trying to just get everything in place in advance of that. So thank you for moving that for us.
And their meeting is Friday, as I'm meaning tomorrow.
Do we have to do another agreement for the city election as well, that for their council elections in that this year?
That's, that's what this is.
I thought this was for FOSH.
No, we got to talk about that later.
Yeah, no, this is just simply for all elections that might be conducted in this year, which would include the city elections coming up in March.
Both of them, then. Any elections? Any elections?
Any election in 2021?
Yes, the 2021 term.
So that'd be two. Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're not talking about two agreements, are you?
Two elections, no.
You have FOSH.
No further questions? All right, we'll move on. Presentation of board appointments, EMS advisory council, Danny Thompson, reapportment term January 2021 through December 2022. Robbie Lee, reapportment term January 2021 through December 2022. Both of these gentlemen have served the county well, has representatives on the EMS advisory council, and I'll make that recommendation to you for them to continue to do so. Also, we have the health board. I have represented this board on the health board for the past four years, and I'm willing to do so again, if that's the desire of the board, unless someone wants to take my spot. If so, please speak up.
Don't everybody's talking once.
Yeah. And also, Planning Commission District 3 alternate Jean.
Maryansky.
Maryansky. That appointment term would be January 21 through December 2021. And I didn't say the term on mine, but it'd be 20, January 2021 through December 2024. So I present those to you for your consideration at our next voting, at next meeting. All right, we'll move on to presentation of 2021 Board of Commissioners Vice Chair Appointment. Each year, you know, we we appoint a vice chair, so I want you to be thinking about that between now and the next voting session of who you want to nominate. Mr. Chris Gaines currently serves, has the vice chair, and has admirably filled in when I'm not here. So we need to be thinking about that, who you would like to have in that position. Chris may be willing to serve again, I'm not going to speak for him. I nominated him last time, and I'm not going to put the pressure on him this time.
I think the comments should be, who do you want to punish?
You weren't here when we nominated you.
Anyway, so think about that. So we need a vice chair to serve as the chair when I am not here. But I'll not make that very difficult on you very long, very often, so. All right. We're moving on to discussion of financing options for the purchase of a ladder truck. Chief Financial Officer Vicki Nykirk. We asked Vicki to run some numbers on that, and she has those for you and has provided those to you, so we'll let her go over that.
Yes, good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Two months ago, I guess now, here we are in January, you all approved the Two months ago, I guess now here we are in January, you all approved the uh, purchase of the ladder truck. Um, the purchase price of this ladder truck is one million, one hundred and ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars and two cents. Uh, it's under, it's my understanding in the last week or so, there's actually going to be a little bit of saving. So it may not be quite that much of just a little bit. Um, Chief Thompson, I think can speak to that. But anyway, um, you had asked me to get uh, some financing options. So um, I contacted ACCG and they have a lease purchase program that a lot of governments use. Because it's a much more economical, I guess, method way of financing. Because you don't pay all the different closing costs and that kind of thing. You basically just pay for your legal fees for the attorneys to review it. Um, so I, I asked them to um, explore a three-year term. And um, so they came back with two banks. They have, I guess, a group of banks that they send these bids out to and then they respond if they're interested. So they had two banks that responded. One was Truist. And the other one was uh, one called Lease One Magnolia. I've never heard of them before. But um, so anyway, those were the two through ACCG. Well, we have our banking services through United Community here in town. And so I felt like it was only right to, to give them the option to see what they could come up with. So um, United Community came back with a one point three zero percent for a tax exempt bank qualified lease purchase. They said their, their bank fees or their legal fees or closing fees or whatever would be about seventy five hundred dollars. Total interest cost for that method would be approximately thirty one thousand, three hundred and twenty seven dollars. Now, it would depend upon how you structure it. Now, you can have a three-year lease, but you can, you can structure it different ways. You can pay it, you know, at the beginning of the, of the month, I mean, the beginning of the year, at the end of the year and arrears, you can pay it quarterly, you can pay it monthly. That can impact your interest cost a little bit. Um, so anyway, their, their best rate was one point three zero. Then through ACCG, uh, Truist Bank, their interest rate was one point zero seven, which I thought was amazing. Um, the attorney fees would be uh, to be determined depending upon how much time our attorneys would have to look at it. Total interest cost would be twenty five thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars. The annual payment would be four hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Um, Lease One Magnolia, they also responded to the ACCG request and their interest rate was two point zero zero four percent. Um, they gave us three different options, a three-year option with three annual payments. Of four hundred and sixteen thousand and twenty eight, twenty three dollars and their interest cost was forty eight thousand, three fifty nine. If you do three years with four annual payments of three hundred and nine thousand dollars, your interest cost would be thirty six thousand and some. And then the third option would be thirty six monthly payments of thirty four thousand, three sixty six and total interest cost would be thirty seven thousand. And as before, the um, attorney fees would be to be determined. So just looking at this as far as, you know, going, if you decide to go with a financing, your, your lease cost method would be to go through the ACCG program. And um, select Truist Bank. Of course, then the other option would be to just pay for it.
That, yeah, yeah.
That's the other option.
Why don't we go through this exercise when we have?
Yeah.
I mean.
So, you know, that's totally up to you. Yeah, but, you know, I said, you know, you all needed to have all the information.
We had asked her to do that. But also we had talked about paying for this with the excess splash funds, which is what my recommendation to this board would be. We just pay for this thing and not pay any of this interest.
Question, it's somewhat related. It is, are this lease only for vehicles or is there options to do that for capital purchases, do you know? I mean, that, that, I use the word vehicle, but.
Yeah, typically it's vehicles.
Just vehicles.
Yeah, but I think that there have been some arrangements where they've done other financings. Um, Ms. Davis might know better than I.
Through ACCG.
Through ACCG. So can they do buildings too through this property? Have you? Okay.
I'm thinking ahead, we've got the, the security system thing that we're going to have to finance pretty quick. And I just wonder if we could use somewhat of the same terms and numbers in our head.
Yeah, I think you can.
Okay. Okay, cool.
Anyway, it gives you some idea. It's amazing to see a interest rate of just a little over one percent. I remember eighteen percent.
I mean, I wouldn't. Toll our, all our money up. How much are, can I ask chief question?
Yeah.
What kind of savings are we looking like? I'm going to tell the number.
Like seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, but.
Come on it.
So I don't have what you all had approved at the December third. I think there was a specific dollar amount. But in that, if you remember, we had the initial price of the truck. That was, that was pretty firm at that time. What we didn't have is all of the equipment that went with it. We had an estimate that we were operating from. Um, and now in working, we finalized all of that filing, but we had to get through the holidays, just trying to get all those numbers. The final number of the purchase of the truck is one million, one hundred, ninety nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty six dollars and two cents.
That's what we got here.
That's what she said.
That is, that is final.
Oh, okay.
That is the final. So I think what's appropriate is knowing that final number now. And I'll let Mr. Davis and Vicky, it may be that y'all have to reapprove it for that. I mean, is that? I think it's, I think it works out to be it's like eleven hundred dollars over Melissa.
So we just take out our Danny's salary and we're good. So we probably do need to revisit that.
Yeah, how was that approved? Was it like a not exceed amount or a specific amount approved?
I don't, I don't.
Okay. Sure. Well, you know, I guess because of the way we're doing this so specifically, I mean, that little balance would be within some spending authority. But I think it's just as easy to put it on the voting session and let's just approve that exact amount.
Yeah, I would think we could do that at the same time we vote the mechanism, how we're going to pay for it.
Yes.
On the same.
We sure could.
Yeah, I'm fine to move it on forward tonight. When we get the thing a couple of days.
It'll actually be here the twenty fourth. Um, and then we will spend several weeks of training. We, we have a lot of training that's scheduled. Um, we're still seeing some backorder on the equipment due to the COVID, go figure, again. Um, but we're working on it.
My kind of thoughts on the financing is if, if we've got the money to pay for it, that's good. But if we're going to have to pay for something else, we're going to have to finance that. It may be at a higher interest rate than what this is. So it may be better to, to finance this and use the money.
Yeah, I think the only thing, I mean, this is qualified to come out of splash six and I'm not sure anything else. Like the new emergency or the new security camera stuff wasn't in splash six, so that'll have to go to splash seven. We will wind up having to finance that, but that's, I understand what you're saying, but we can't, we can't do that.
Different.
Tied to splash and there's nothing else in splash that we need.
This specific item purchase here was mentioned specifically in splash six.
Right.
And so we will have excess revenue probably beginning with the. January or February receipts going all the way through the end of June, which we would be able to pay for this without having to finance it.
Chairman Dawson, Ms. Vicky, is there a penalty for paying it off early?
Not that I'm aware of.
So if we, if we saw that we, the collections were coming in above, if we financed it in one year or two years and paid it off.
We got your sunk cost of, you got your sunk cost of your attorney closing fees that you wouldn't get back whether you financed it for six months.
They might if we talked to them.
Have you ever seen, have you ever seen an attorney discount?
Must have been lower.
Well, I think, I don't think there's any doubt that we're going to have the money to pay for it through splash. I mean, we're already at forty five million, one hundred and something thousand, if I remember looking at what Vicky sent out. Uh, which means we had a forty six million dollar splash and that doesn't include the December collection. So if we do as good in December as we did in November, we will surpass that forty six million dollar mark. Uh, probably in the next few days when Vicky finally gets those numbers sometime between now and the twenty fifth of this month, which is usually a month behind. So that would give us, if that happens, a full six months worth of collections to take care of this project and some of the other projects that we talked about, like the Socratics.
We've already paid for it. We just reimbursed ourselves. Is that correct or we have, we stroked the check? Okay.
Well, we don't have it yet either.
When is the actual money due?
When we, I guess, get delivery back from whoever's doing the upgrades.
Okay, so we're going to have to regardless, we're going to have to pay for it out of fund balance and then turn around and pay fund balance back with collections and splash six.
Well, no, it'll come out of splosh. It would be paid for out of the splosh account.
We have enough, we have.
You got a balance beginning, okay.
We have a balance.
Okay, okay.
We're good.
Yeah.
To make everything work out. The main thing about splash is that we took care of the forty six million dollars worth of projects that were there. Uh, and we will have that ability without a doubt to do and then have the excess to take care of these other things that are actually part of splash as well. Because you have to stay within the parameters that you already voted for, the citizens voted for. All right, any other questions for Ms. Vicky or Danny? All right, thank y'all.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Discussion of study concerning cost of services by land use type, residential, commercial, agriculture. Mr. Gaines.
So everybody should have a um, a sample of a study and, and how I got to researching this is. In looking at uh, economic development for the community and how we balance out residential and commercial growth. There've been a lot of conversations and um, our community is fortunate to have a lot of commercial growth down on four hundred. But as it's pretty well known, the, the commercial growth generates more revenue for the county than the residential. Residential costs you for uh, service delivery. And so. I believe in data and I believe in facts and I believe in getting the most accurate information that we can. So I reached out to Kathy Papa with um, GMRC and um, she directed me to a Dr. Meek. Um, that has done some studies similar to this through Georgia Tech. And so what a study like this would do would be to give a very specific snapshot of our community. And where our revenue sources are. I think um, over the last several years, we have um. Worked toward reducing our property tax reliance and shifted it over to um, sales tax reliance as well as other avenues. Um, so it dissects and breaks down what our different revenue sources are. And it basically takes our revenue sources and our different zonings and tells us um, for every um. Dollar in service delivery expense that we have, what does that zoning generate or what does it cost us? And so um, having that information, I think is critical for a lot of the decisions that this board has to make in regards to um, zonings. Uh, I think it also uh, in regards to, you know, types of products we're looking for, in regards to um. Um, negotiating things like, like splash with city and talking to them, how, you know, how we, uh, their decisions impact our service delivery costs. So to me, it's a, it's a data point that we desperately need uh, to help us make more educated decisions. We had a citizen some time ago even mentioned this uh, when we were in discussions with the rezoning, I believe. Um, to really take a snapshot and, and gain a better understanding of what it costs us. To deliver uh, the required services to each house that we put on the ground or each business that gets uh, growing out of our soul in Dawson County. And so I would just encourage us to um, consider uh, going forward with this study. The, I did speak with Dr. Meeks and they've done them, or Dr. Meek, and they have done these studies for communities throughout Georgia. Um, there is a, initially a set price for the study, which is fifteen thousand dollars. Um. Again, fifteen thousand dollars is a lot of money, as I discussed a minute ago, but I think that it pays dividends when it comes uh, for information for us to make the best, best decisions. For the community as we move forward and um, with the data points that they can generate and give us a nice package. It will um, it will help us to uh, communicate those understandings of those, that information to developers as they come in, as well as to us as we determine what our service delivery costs are.
And it would take how long to get the results?
Doctor, yeah, Dr. Meek said it would probably take forty five to sixty days in order to get the uh, data collection. The biggest thing that they need is um, staff participation because they are coming in and doing the study specifically for um, our community. I think it, it, it helps uh, the, the development authority tremendously and gives them some tools and resources that they can have in their pocket as well. Um, when it comes to the different decisions that they need to make and recruiting and trying to find the types of businesses that the community wants. Um, but it's, they initially said uh, forty five, sixty days max would be what we're looking at. Um, to do the study. I'm of the mindset that I think that the study is so important that I would be willing to, especially when we look at what residential costs us. To pause our residential applications in the form of a, a moratorium on residential applications for a short period of time. To let us get this data and this information. It wouldn't stop anything that's already in the hopper or already underway. But um, it would just give us a checkpoint to uh, to understand what our infrastructures are and what our service delivery costs are before we proceed.
Questions?
Are they ready to start ASAP?
Um, I wanted to have the conversation and share the information with the board first. So I mean, I have not engaged Dr. Meek to say, when can you start? Um, I wanted to um, just share the information and the um, kind of the path that I've been down and how I got there. And um, you know, I, I think we're fine doing some more due diligence over the next couple of weeks. And maybe even doing a um, call with Dr. Meek if some people want to do that and just understand, you know, what the um, process looks like and then go from there.
Is it data that we've already have collected? I mean, you said staff would have to be heavily involved. So I'm assuming so or?
Yeah, so I think staff would have access to the, to the data that we're looking for as far as it's, it's mainly finance, you know? And what does it cost for us to um, deliver the service of a fire and EMS or the sheriff's department to a residential house or to a um, um. Uh, office building. So I think that finance would be engaged with this and have to give over some of the information that's, it's already public information. It's just gaining all that data and putting it into an easy to understand format.
So they would actually take in like the uh, the actual values that the property brings in to do the study, like the uh, adware and tax, property tax. Well, that, how accurate is it going to be? Is it going to be like?
Yeah, so I think you're looking on the, this is on the expense side. So it's really looking at what is the expenses per um, zoning classification. Um, and so we're not really determining what the mill rate should be set at. It's more of what does it cost us um, to deliver a service to that particular unit? So I think it's more on our expense side, which would come from finance.
And I mean, that would be nice to have a quantifiable number to look at.
Yeah, and, and the study that, that I've given everybody um, is for, you know, some other communities and counties. And, you know, one thing that I, I like and that I've tried to communicate to some people is. And we hear this, we go to ACCG trainings and the city goes to GMA trainings and um, you know, they're always talking about having a balanced um, economic um, community. So you want residential that, that is where your workers live and, and, and they contribute to your uh, community. And then you have commercial and, and so balance those out. You get too out of whack on one or the other. You get too much commercial, you don't have enough residential for people to live there to work in the commercial spaces. You get too much residential, the residential costs you more than the commercial deliveries in revenue. So, or jobs or, I mean, there's a lot of quantifiable things that they look at. But um, again, just in my mind, the approach that I take to my seat and the decisions that I make here is data and facts. And I try not to get emotion involved and I think data is, is very critical for us to have.
Would the tax assessor's office have to be involved in this?
They may, and that'd be a question we've, we can ask. Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure they'll.
Jameson's saying no. Be careful, your head's going to fly off.
Any other questions? Comments?
I think find out. How long was, how long it takes? When will they start?
They said you didn't know.
When she found, when she talked to them.
Yeah, I mean, next, next step, you know, in my mind was, was letting everybody, you know, be aware of it. And then let's start gathering some other information on timelines and processes and uh, who all would be required staff wise to contribute uh, information. And go from there.
Hopefully we can find all that out in the next two weeks.
I should be able to. I should be able to find that out in the next two weeks.
Okay. All right, next we have discussion of city impact fees. Commissioner Siderfield.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. I think this kind ties along. Commissioner Gaines was talking about service delivery. Received several phone calls last several weeks about annexation and and homes being built in the city. Which and we've we've talked to the mayor before, sit down, talk to him about the impact fees and basically, they don't have the services, I guess, to collect the impact fees for. So I reached out to the our county attorney's office and talked to them about it is we'd heard some other cities and different counties have implemented impact fees that the county collected for those cities, which helped service delivery throughout the whole county and and also in that city. I was told we couldn't do that unless we do a member ran into understanding, I guess, in IGA, IGA and and what really, I mean, we've talked about the annexation we got on the on we're talking about right now is going on the city. And I had a problem with if it got approved of the county paying for the road. I mean, we're looking over a million dollars for the improvement of the road going into the subdivision. And so I'd like to look or or get the attorney or however how we want to approach it to come up with that IGA and send it over there or talk with their attorney and see. I mean, service delivery. We could collect it for their park. We could collect it for their roads. We could collect it for emergency services. And I don't know about that top Jameson park. They got a park there. A library is in the city limits. Possibly for the sheriff, if you know, that's for the other call volumes up in the city. Emergency services call volumes, forty percent or more of this is city versus what they're running in the county.
Can they can they be part of impact fees?
Well, I think with this agreement, they could.
Oh, okay.
Right, exactly.
Certain things that.
Well, and and that's sort of the first question was can we impose impact fees within the city and we cannot. And so and that's Commissioner Siderfield's concern and and maybe everybody's concerned and it's a valid concern that there's annexation of property. They're taking the property, but then as to the countywide services, which, you know, sometimes most typically would be roads. They are proving this increased density that perhaps you wouldn't approve in the county, but then you still have the infrastructure cost. And so the initial question was can we impose impact fees in the city? And we can't do that because that's within their jurisdiction. We don't have the ability to exercise our authority with inside the city limits, absent an intergovernmental agreement. So that would be, I think the first step would be perhaps, and and I'm happy to contact the city attorney's office or if you have a particular contact or the mayor, if you want to start there to see if they would even entertain it. I mean, I'm at city impact fees generally can be quite controversial. And so my recommendation would be that we not spend time in legal fees drafting an agreement until they have sort of an agreement and concept that yes, we will do this. And it may mean to be like a meeting with some key players for them to understand what we're asking them to do. But I would propose we do that rather than our office start drafting because, I mean, if they just say no, you know, we've done a lot of work and spent your money for no reason. So I I would think we get some kind of agreement and concept that they'll consider impact fees because interestingly, the city does not have any type of impact fee program right now.
And no taxes.
Well, they they our situation is extremely unique in the state of Georgia is the fact that typically your cities are your economic hubs. And that's where you find your your commercial growth and goes back to what I was talking about a minute ago. Your commercial growth helps offset your residential cost of services. And so our situation is somewhat unique in that the economic engine is outside of the footprint of the city limits. We're not allowed to collect impact fees within that jurisdiction. However, we're responsible for the predominant services that people have to have, which is which is fire, EMS, sheriff's services, active park and rec. You know, the kids that live in the city are playing on our park and rec and and they live in the county too. So it's not like they're the outcast whatsoever, but goes right back in hand with what I'm talking about with my other study is for every house that gets built there. There is no cost per se to the city to deliver services to that house. That cost is borne by us. And that's why we looked at impact fees and the why we have impact fees because that new move in growth costs us money to provide those services long term and the infrastructure long term.
And I think that's one reason we're a hundred percent on residential.
Right, and and I've had the conversation with a couple of them and and I understand their response. Their response has been they they don't want to make a hurdle for commercial. That's my same that's my same concern with doing impact fees to begin with when we first put them back in. But we were able to structure it where commercial is reduced at a certain percentage and residential still at the highest it can be because residential is what costs you. You want to encourage the commercial growth that provides better paid jobs for people that live in our county that provides the resources for the community. You want the residential, but at a balanced approach and the the residential just cost us. Every house they build, it costs us money. And I've said that.
And they're not building commercial.
They're what?
They're not building any commercial. I mean, they don't have
Correct.
I think ninety-nine point nine percent of stuff growth in the city is residential, which affects all it affects all of our services.
Yeah, it would be ideal if they could help us support the cost that we bear anytime they put a house in. As well as, you know, your prime example of the annexation discussion is, you know, that that happens, there's a million dollar infrastructure, road improvement that kind of falls on our plates.
You do have to remember though, those people do pay county property taxes.
Absolutely.
It's not like they're sitting in the city and not paying a dime.
Right.
Our our county resists to the same thing.
Yes.
And you're looking at, one thing too, Sharon, to note here, when you're talking about an impact fee, you're talking about new growth. You're getting like we do, we we charge an impact fee for a new residence or a new commercial structure to help offset what the cost to provide that service for that new resident is at the very beginning. And then they get in the line of paying property taxes, just like all the rest of us.
Yeah, that's right. And I think the other important thing to note and and it's been discussed, but just again to emphasize is that it's the annexation piece of it that really complicates it because you make decisions for land use in the county based upon what your infrastructure can support and about your projections for water and sewer and roads and so forth, and you can control all that. So you may determine we can't support this density because we don't have the infrastructure, we can't afford to put the infrastructure in and you 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 maintain control of those decisions. But when a city, and I'm not just picking on Dawsonville, any city anywhere. It's just the way the concept works. Any city then decides to go in and pluck out land from a county, well, then they can they do that by annexation and they take that in their jurisdiction. And then they don't have to adhere to our zoning and land use requirements and they typically approve much higher densities because they're more in city limits. And then we are left with infrastructure woes unless there is situations that they annex on both sides of a roads and they're forced to take the road. The law says that, but that usually doesn't always happen. And so that's the quagmire that we're left in is they can make decisions with us and not having the ability to put our infrastructure needs in the mix.
And it's exasperated because we provide all the services. Some cities have city police or city fire or or city libraries, but all of that falls back on us to provide.
So would the thought process be for maybe our county attorney to make some contact with the city attorney to?
See if they'll be willing to sit down and talk.
See if they're willing to talk about it?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure an attorney to attorney is the best approach, I would think. Tim reaching out to somebody. I mean, it's up to y'all.
No, I mean, I actually don't disagree with that at all, that it's very much a maybe diplomatic policy measure. I'm happy to do it, but it might be better from your belly.
Do you wanna?
I do.
You want to talk to the mayor?
I do.
All right.
And and then Commissioner, if there's an interest in a meeting to hear about it more, then I think that would be a place where we'd bring in the city and county attorney maybe to talk about more how it would look.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on that? All right, we'll move on to county manager report. Ms. Vicki, you gonna do that? For those of you who may not know, County Manager Headley's not with us today. His father-in-law passed away. And so he is in Florida with his wife and we send our prayers and condolences to them.
I have a very short report for you today. The key indicator report for the month of December is in your packet. And this also includes the list of agreements and contracts. I also want to mention that today was the vaccine event for COVID nineteen. And so I believe Chief Thompson is going to come and give you all an update on it.
Come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki. Any questions for Ms. Vicki before she sits down?
No, I I just I just wanted to say I do appreciate these reports. May not say much about it, but boy, I'm telling you, it gives a snapshot and whoever has to do these, you are really keeping tabs on stuff. And I love it.
It comes from every department.
Well, I'm telling you, they do. They do a lot of work and it's a lot of work to keep up with that and I appreciate it. It is, it is. But just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as a Philly and County Manager Vicki so politely threw me under the bus there. Yes, we did. We had a we had our COVID nineteen vaccine site today. Let me start by saying I cannot begin to thank so many of our county employees. Matt Parks and Rec Staff, Laura over here, you know, my personnel, my men and women, the Good Shepherd Clinic, the district, the local Department of Public Health, really you had about ten different agencies there today to make a very, very successful event. We did a lot of dry runs to make sure that we tried to cover every scenario that we could face that would go wrong. It rained. It was cold. And, you know, we were able to get people in and out ahead of their appointment times. We did, we don't have the final number yet, but we know that we can safely say we did over seven hundred and fifty vaccines today for the community. And that is is huge. So wanted, you know, really, I can't begin to express enough, the employees of Dawson County, they stood up today. And they made every one of you proud and you will be hearing in the days coming from your community about how happy they were. We had phone calls.
I've already heard.
Good, and that's good.
I've already heard amongst all this negativity. This was a wonderful.
It is. And, you know, it's it's not because of what one person did. It's because of the team effort of every employee of Dawson County, your Department of Public Health officials. And I know they've taken a beating and a black eye, but you know, you've only got so many doses of the vaccine. And we're going to go back to the drawing board tomorrow and we're going to start asking for another event just like this. We're going to save the group today. They'll be back February eighteenth, their same appointment times and we'll they'll get their second dose at that time, but we're going to continue to push, continue to serve our community and continue to do everything that we possibly can to safeguard against this COVID nineteen. I'll take any questions that you may have, but again, my hat's off to the employees today. They're they're the ones that deserve to be here, not me.
Next date. What's the next date?
February eighteenth for their second shot.
About to the next run.
Don't know yet.
Don't know yet. We're still we're still working on dates, but we're looking for, we're going to try to do something, another event, just like we're doing right now. Probably another two weeks from now.
I thought there were eighteen, uh, eighteen, eight hundred and ten vaccines available. Was that not the and then you said?
There was. We still had the final count.
Oh, so you you don't have any left?
No, there was none left, but we know that some people arrived late. You're going to have cancellations, obviously. We had to deal with that, you know, and and Laura, I'll tell you, there was a lot of learning curves as far as that goes. But, you know, it was very, very successful. My hat's off to the employees.
And I'll give you a little bit more data. Laura and I sat in on a Zoom meeting the other day with the representative from the state. Georgia is getting a hundred and twenty thousand doses per week for a hundred and fifty-nine counties. Hundred and twenty thousand doses a week. Off the top of that hundred and twenty thousand, they're taking forty thousand doses and sending them to back to like CVS and places like that that are responsible for vaccinating the people in the nursing homes and the assisted living and stuff like that. So they're taking that off the top. So that leaves eighty thousand doses a week for a hundred and fifty-nine counties. And that's the reason you have the categories that they have broken it down into for public safety and people over sixty-five and the things that they have now. Speaking with the gentleman that was there, that made the presentation, he does not know when that number will go up or if it'll even stay at that hundred and twenty thousand per week. Myself and the commissioner from Lumpkin County, both our school superintendents, both the our city mayor and the city mayor of Valona, we're all in this Zoom call. And they all had the same thought process is if we had the vaccinations, we have the people that can give them. So and we made that recommendation to him so he could pass that back to the governor so the governor could pass that on up further because they're getting their vaccinations, obviously, from the federal government. So hopefully that number's going to increase. But as of Tuesday, I guess it was when we had that Zoom meeting, they had received nine hundred and sixty thousand doses in the state of Georgia and had given out forty-seven percent of that, about four hundred and fifty some odd thousand doses. And at that particular time, we're saving the other fifty percent for the second dose, not knowing if they were going to, because it's a two dose shot, I mean, two dose process. So you have to get the two doses and you have to get them within a certain timeframe. Twenty-one days for Pfizer, I believe it is, and twenty-eight days for Moderna. So the process has been slow, cumbersome. And the biggest thing that we tried to reiterate to them is we needed better communication. That was valuable information that he was able to give us that we couldn't pride anybody else. And so that's what we told him. We 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 needed information so that we could look at these people that are out here in our citizenry and tell them this is why you're waiting on your shot because we'd love to be able to do this day after day after day after day. As we talked about in that meeting, we have the ability in our county alone with our own personnel, if we had twenty-five thousand doses, we could give out twenty-five thousand doses. So we're hoping that they understand where we are now and we have a better understanding of where they are, but I wanted to give you that update on what we were able to find out. And thanks to our new state representative, Will Wade, for setting that up.
And I'll say, you know, to the to the chief's comment, thanking all the staff and everything that is that's part of leadership, thanking everybody that's around you to pull the weight. But it takes somebody to lead that group and you and Laura have been phenomenal in this situation. And it didn't start off phenomenal. I was on vacation getting phone calls and it didn't start off phenomenal, but
We're gonna take your phone from your own out when you're on vacation. You need to check that with me before you leave the state.
Serious kudos to y'all for for stepping up in a big way and going above and beyond to to make it happen because it does take leadership and thank you for that.
Thank you.
And the state health department was responsible, is supposed to be the leader in this.
They are.
They are, but you know, we have an obligation to the community.
Yes, I understand.
We're gonna push them. We're gonna continue to push them. We're thankful of the partnerships that we have with them. And I think as the chairman alluded to, I think it's really, it is critical for the community to understand that when you vaccinate eight hundred people, twenty-one or twenty-eight days later, you have to have eight hundred more doses to repeat that second dose.
Moderna and and both of them.
Yeah, it's just the timeframe is a little different. Pfizer is the twenty-one day. The Moderna is twenty-eight day, but it's critical to remember that. Today we issued the Moderna.
So if you get Moderna, whatever that is, the first time, the second time, you have to use the same manufacturer?
Correct.
And hoping in the very near.
You issued a card. I just happen to have mine.
Okay.
There's your card.
So you have a lot number.
Where where's the lot? Oh, yeah.
So that lot number assigned to you based on that vaccine dose. And so when you come back, they'll add another lot number down there to your card that you have.
Well, you have to show that like in places where you go.
Currently, no.
No?
But I'm not gonna step into that political mess. I'll go ahead and run back to my sister.
Was that a mess? Oh, I didn't know. I didn't. I didn't know it was mess. I Oh, is that a mess? Oh, I didn't know. I didn't. I didn't know it was mess. I apologize.
A man's got to know his limitations.
I wasn't informed it was a mess.
Only speak on what you know. All right, county attorney report. Ms. Davis.
No public report from the county attorney tonight. Thank you.
Do we have a need for a executive session?
No, not really.
Okay.
Yeah, we can proceed.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us to the end of our work session agenda. We will take a few minutes to get everything organized and we'll move right into our voting session. Thank you for your attendance and stay with us for the voting session if you so desire. Thank you.